It's called to order with all members present. I'll be asking our city clerk to do the pledge of allegiance today. And I'll be asking our assistant city manager, Eric Lee, to please do an invocation. Okay?
Please stand. And repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Dance, one nation. For all.
I hope everyone's doing well out there as we start reopening the city of Hawthorne. And the Greater South Bay and California carefully opens up. We still need to be mindful with respects to the COVID-19 threat. It's present and hasn't gone away yet. The state and city government and society is recognizing the need for people to go out there and restart the economic engine. But everybody be careful, social distancing or physical distancing, wear your face masks. Okay? We're gonna start with council.
Mr. Mayor to the chair, we didn't do the invocation.
Okay, yeah, so let's proceed with the invocation. Mr. Eric Lee, so with all those people who have passed in mind. And for a better future, if you could roll that into your invocation, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Father, I just, I thank you for allowing us to meet virtually today to carry out the business of the city of Hawthorne. I pray that you give our council members, elected officials, wisdom as they make decisions affecting our community. I also pray for health and safety of our community and that you would be with the families of those who have lost loved ones and that you would, you would bring this terrible state of emergency to a swift end. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well done.
Excellent. A council member, Awad, has a presentation on the agenda, New Star Family Justice Center, the teen dating, the violence prevention program. Go ahead, council member Awad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to keep it brief. Kind of the Elna from the New Star Family Justice Center has a video as well to present regarding this prevention program. It's a very unique program where she's taking individuals and students from all of the surrounding high schools and kind of educating them on the proper way to go about teen dating, especially when it comes to social media. So with that said, Elna, yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor Vargas, council member. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
I'm here at home. I hope everyone is safe and in good spirits. I want to thank the council member, Hedra Awad, for inviting our agency to report on a recent program we conducted with a group of teens here in Hawthorne. My name is Elna Maloney and I serve as the executive director of the New Star Family Justice Center, which is a domestic violence agency. Our primary activities are providing wraparound services to victims of domestic violence. But just as important, we reach out to the community with prevention services. So when we think about how to reduce instances of domestic violence in our community, for us, it means that we need to reach out to young people and teach them about healthy relationships in the hope that they will not engage in abusive relationships in the future. So we came up with two programs, one that we conduct in the fall. It's an anti-bullying art contest that I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with. And then in February, we do a teen dating violence prevention program. February is recognized and teen dating violence prevention month. However, this year, we were confronted with the challenge that COVID-19 gave to all of us. We were recruiting students from the high school to conduct the program and then all of the sudden, we had to close our front doors, not our services. Our services have been available all throughout, but the front door has been closed and we really could not get together as a group like we normally do every year. So we work with the teens a little bit to find out, you know, how can we still go ahead with this program? Of course, we all thought we would do something online with Zoom, which we did. And we came up with, with a little bit of an innovative idea. In our talks, I was asking them, I was telling them that it would be nice that whatever project we do, we will be able to present it to the city council member at one of their meetings. And that's when the idea of coming up with a proclamation came about. And so the students felt that they would go through the process of the classes that we offer, but then they would document some of the things that they learned and they would like to present that in a document called the proclamation to you. So it was quite exciting. I was very surprised to see the attendance was excellent. I didn't think that a group of teens would attend all of the meetings, but they did. So we, you know, we feel good that we were still able to conduct this program. And he gave us ideas actually that maybe we can continue doing it throughout the summer as well. So this document that they put together presents only some of the things that they learned. They've learned lots of other things, you know, like recognizing healthy and unhealthy relationships. Teaching teens to be assertive when they're confronted with a situation, you know, where there is abuse. Talk about the warning signs and so on and so forth. So this document that they put together is just sort of the beginning only of what they learned. So I would, if somebody can play the video, the video represents the very last few minutes of the program.
Thank you.
And you start family justice center teen dating violence prevention program presented to city of Hawthorne council members on this day, June 9, 2020. That's the date it's going to be presented and this is our proclamation. Number one.
Whereas we, the participants of the teen dating violence prevention program, join together to learn about healthy relationships that lead to non-violence and mutual respect.
Whereas there are various kinds of abuse, verbal, emotional, sexual, spiritual, financial, economic, and.
Whereas one in three adolescents in the U.S. is a victim of physical, sexual, emotional or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds rates of other types of youth violence and.
Whereas engaging teens and adults to promote social norms that support healthy relationships has great potential to transform our communities so that teen dating violence is not acceptable and everyone has access to the tools to intervene when they witness teen dating violence and.
Whereas in California, the age of consent is 18. If you or your partner are under the age of 18, you cannot give consent.
Whereas we must work together to create a world where every teen can live free of dating and sexual violence in their homes, schools, colleges, universities, and community.
We have resolved that we, the participants of the teen dating violence prevention spring 2020 program declare that the healthy relationships consist of trust, honesty, respect, equality, and compromises. We pledge to be ambassadors to our peers and to incorporate the information we learned in our everyday lives.
So again, appreciate you guys coming out. Appreciate guys taking the time to come out and explain only the teen dating violence prevention program at the New Star Family Justice Center, but also giving your background and what you've learned from this program and how crucial it is to have access to these resources. So I want to start off by, you know, first asking if you guys can both give me your names.
My name is Albert Okorogwu.
And my name is Allison Okorogwu.
Wonderful. And can you also give me a little background on the school you're attending and what you guys are studying as well?
The school that we're attending is Da Vinci Science. Allison here is a junior and I'm a sophomore. We recently just graduated. And over at Da Vinci Science, they're teaching subjects such as PLTW. And then we also have like courses such as.
Like the medical engineering, just engineering classes, mathematics, and sciences are main subjects in our school.
Now, from the whole program, what is one important thing that each of you learned?
I think one thing, important thing that I learned was when we went over sexting, like when, you know, teens, like they're dating or something and then they send like inappropriate pictures of like their parts to other people, like their girlfriend or their friend or something. They send it to like other people and whatnot. And I think one thing that was very important that I learned is that that's actually a felony and that you can actually get into trouble for something like that.
For me, when we were going over different types of abuse, I didn't really think that financial abuse was one of them. I know more of the verbal abuse, physical abuse, but that was one of the newest ones that we really learned that had to do with money.
The last question I have is, would they, would you recommend this program to other teens and why?
I would definitely recommend this program to other people like around my age that have been experiencing things like this, but they haven't really had the chance to like express themselves. Or they're just, they haven't like really seen it as like a priority to reach out or like educate themselves about something like this because it's very important that people, like teens and stuff, especially in a time like this where it's like people are mostly just staying at home and they're not really making as much connections. It's really important for them to like go out and learn and educate themselves more about teen dating violence.
Yeah, for me, I do highly recommend it because like Albert said, teens do need to educate themselves because a lot of this is some, this is like really big when it comes to relationships that teens are not really aware of or like they just didn't really know because you can be abused in different kinds of ways and like sexting or like holding on to intimate pictures of you that can be like blackmailing you, just verbal abuse, physical abuse. And yeah, they really need to be educated on this because it's something that's really important and that can lead them in the future.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this. Now you can see some of the things that our teens are learning, which it's all good. In addition, they also had a little bit of a learning in civic engagements with learning about what is a proclamation. So that was all good. So again, thank you so much and hopefully I have more opportunities in the future to present to you what we do for our community. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have a question and then I have a comment. So Ms. Maloney, how does financial abuse manifest itself?
Well. When, when a person is not able to, let's see, when a person is not able to control money that they have or money that they earn, when someone else controls that for them, then they are not free, they are abused. In fact, the financial abuse is one of the worst type of abuses because a lot of the clients that we see at our center, if they had the money, they could actually, they can actually disconnect from the unhealthy relationships they're in. But actually they cannot because they don't have money to move somewhere else for food or to take care of their children. So I would say this is one of the worst type of abuses.
Well, I was, I was asking though, in the sense of a dating relationship, I thought we were talking about dating relationships.
Okay, sorry about that. In a dating relationship, well, for example, the abusive partner would say what the other person can and cannot buy. If somebody bought a blouse, for example, oh, that blouse doesn't look good, you have to return that blouse. So that would be an example.
Okay. And then I have a comment. I just want to congratulate you on your program. I think it's so valuable to the community. I think that you keep, you're very creative and you keep thinking of more and more ways to engage our students so that they can, they can, they can learn such valuable lessons about relationships and they absolutely need that. So thank you for this.
You're welcome. Thank you again.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Ms. Maloney, how you doing?
I'm doing fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Like Ms. Valentine said, you know, you've been so creative and innovative, so that's still one of the reasons that I asked our city manager and Kimberly Mack from the CDBG Fund, you know, to see if we can put you in our budget for the CDBG. So, and we did approve the budget last meeting, you know, 2021. So you're going to be able to receive some money from the CDBG for a community service program because your program is outstanding. You know, like the domestic violence bullet and teen dating violence is very important, especially nowadays on the pandemic. There is an increase of domestic violence going on because a lot of people spending times at home, you know, getting together. So there is an increase of that. So thank you for keeping these programs and all the domestic up to front to us. And I have to tell you that the other day I watched Netflix have a series called 13 Reasons Why. And I cried most of those, but because it's about, you know, high school bullying and violent and sexual abuse that goes unreported and even suicide things. So I think if you have a chance, you can show some of these nine graders to high school about that Netflix, you know, 13 Reasons Why is a tremendous series that deals with these issues in high school that I tell you, I was crying most of those because of 13 episodes. It's a 13 reasons, but it's like 13 one hour episodes. So it's a tremendous series that everybody should see. So again, I congratulate you to keep this program going and with God will, you know, in the future, we'll give you more money.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I made a note of this and I will discuss with my staff to see what we can do with that 13 Reasons Why program.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for joining us. A great job. Council member Valentine has a presentation on the agenda, the businesses reopening in the city of Hawthorne. Councilwoman Valentine.
Oh.
Would you like to proceed?
Oh, yes. I think, I think we're going to have the presentation from the city manager has chosen someone to make that presentation. Mr. City Manager.
Actually, yes, our police department has Lieutenant Romero, if I'm not mistaken. Is that true, chief?
Yes.
Lieutenant Romero, you're good. I'm good to go. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council member, and all dignitaries present here with us today. Want to thank you for giving me a chance to update you on what the Hawthorne Police Department is doing to mitigate the spread of coronavirus within our business sector. As a lieutenant overseeing the special operations bureau, the chief asked me to take over the Safe Business Initiative several months ago. Part of his request is to establish a good working relationship with some of our local businesses, both big and small. We started a two-pronged approach. One was to identify our major stakeholders as well as the chronically challenged smaller businesses. Our big stakeholders were Target, Lowe's, Home Depot, SpaceX, all those. And so we also want to build those relationships, establish a good open communication so that we could address any issues that may preclude them from improving the commerce. The other one was a small business. Obviously those pose challenges because they don't have the resources, security cameras, don't have the ability to address any challenge that they may have. As such, we launched this two-pronged approach by making sure that we deployed our resources, our special operations bureau, community affairs, to go out there and establish those relationships. As luck would have it, when coronavirus struck, we already had the platform in place. So the transition from the Safe Business Initiative that the chief asked us to launch made it a lot easier to address the issue of coronavirus. What the chief directed us to do is to emphasize our presence, visibility through security checks and court checks at our local businesses. And part of that security checks entailed our simple presence. That was all the bureaus across the department, including our court enforcement, going in, being present, being visible, and make sure people saw us as visible, a component of the community. The second, probably the most important, was our court checks. That was the meet and greet with the owners, the managers, the employees to find out what needs were taking place. That entailed us presenting them with the latest CDC as well as LA County Department Health Services regulations. We made sure that there was all the protective equipment was in place, distance, social distance, and all the other requirements that were in effect for that particular business. With time, we observed the enforcement unit and that was also a blessing. We have net channel after making, consolidating some immediate responses and consolidating the referral service. Our enforcement has now taken the lead. They are armed with information, leaflets, and all the necessary things that are important to make sure those businesses continue to function and that we mitigate the spread of coronavirus. I'm happy to say that since the coronavirus impacted us in early March, to this date, we have logged in over 14,000 security checks citywide. That's a huge presence in our city and that's a huge impact altogether. But what's even more critical, more important is our court checks. We're close to 1,800 court checks since March to this date. What that means is we're out there, we're visible, we're present, we're talking to the businesses, we're talking to clients, we're talking to the owners and make sure that they can trust us, that they can rely on us to be able to help them through the process. Fortunately for us, we have not encountered any problems with the licenses, we have not encountered any problems with any non-compliance and the relationships that we've established are remarkable. And I think that plays pretty well with the level of cooperation that we've had so far. So with those numbers, what that translates to is with what we have here and now our enforcement doing 80 to 100 inspections per week, they're at the forefront of identifying those that are going to be opening up, armed with up-to-date information and make sure we're all safe. So with all the presence, all our involvement to this day, a collateral effect or byproduct of just our presence alone has resulted in 70%, over 70% decrease in crime in our local businesses. That's a huge impact. So that's actually a very good thing to share. The Safe Business Initiative has also resulted in good working relationships with our businesses or managers to the point where as we move and we progress through the easement of CDC guidelines, we can rely on them to implement those changes without hesitation. And lastly, the one thing that is probably most important is we have deployed a significant amount of resources out there from traffic to parking enforcement to detectives and we've managed to keep our employees safe. But we've also made sure that to this date, none of our employees have contracted the virus. That's a huge impact. What that translates to in the, given the volume of our impact on our presence, is that our businesses are also being safe, they're also being vetted out to make sure they're in compliance. And so the most important thing is that our community is given the opportunity to have a safe and have a healthy shopping experience for residents. So it's a huge impact. So we're very proud of our experience, the community impact, task force, enforcement in our department through the leadership of Chief Ishi. I believe we've got a very, very good project going on. And I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. That was a really good report. I really appreciate what you're doing and I'm so glad that you are coordinating this effort with the businesses to make certain that they're having a successful reopening. I just have a couple of questions. What has been the biggest challenge the businesses have faced and also have we lost any businesses?
I spoke to the enforcement earlier today and just by querying some of them, there are a few small businesses that have not opened yet. And when they go out every morning or throughout their day, they send you an end-to-watch report that identifies all the businesses that they've been in touch with. Some of the ones that have been listed as still closed are your nail salons, your beauty stores, some of those, that field is the one that still remains closed. Interestingly enough, I'd like to be able to go back and contact those businesses owners to find out what the delay is. Maybe it's lack of information, maybe they just don't have the resources, but it's something we're entertaining at this time to make sure that we follow up.
And are they, are they, are businesses requiring that masks be worn by the public?
Yes, they are. That is one of the requirements. That is one of the LA County Health Services requirement. And the employees that are operating these businesses are required to wear them as well.
Okay. So I guess I want to know, when you visit them, what do they say they need? What is it that they're, what is their, I know they need money, but aside from that, what do they need from, from us, from the city?
More time, easement of the protocols. They'd like to open up the, their businesses so they can obviously conduct more business, but they understand that there are strict regulations. They understand that it is going to take some time and it's just a matter of time before they open up. But ironically, they just would like to open up and conduct business like they used to. Yeah, but they recognize they're cooperative, they are understanding that it's just a matter of time.
And as a follow-up to my earlier question about have we lost any businesses, are we in danger of losing any more businesses and are there any that are in trouble?
Not that I'm aware of. That's probably an area that we have not visited, but the small businesses that remain closed are a small amount, small quantities. And we can see him, see part of some of the storefronts along the major avenues, but they're not major contributors, they're not major stores. But it is family, it is a store, it is somebody's business, it is somebody's livelihood. So it is important, it is critical, but I think it's just a matter of time, give it some time before we find out exactly why, why they remain closed.
Can you follow up with them and find out, it's the ones you think are in trouble? Can you find out what the, what the problem is, why they're not reopening?
I'll work with our enforcement this week, identify and give them some direction as to identify those businesses in their beats, itemize those and go back and contact the business owners. Absolutely. That'd be very important.
And can you let us know then?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Lieutenant Romero, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this question, maybe Arnie or somebody at the court enforcement. Have you, we seen anybody come in and ask for modification of the parking lot, you know, to put more like dining experience in the parking lot or example, the gruins, for example, AR work or the other one, to put more space outdoors instead of indoors?
Unfortunately, I don't have, I'm not privy to that information if they have requested it. Probably something that's been directed over to planning, who would then assess the viability for that, but I would not have that information. But I can certainly ask and inquire of our enforcement as well as our planning if that's a viable option.
Okay, appreciate, thank you. Okay, appreciate. Thank you.
Of course.
To, uh, to the chair, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Officer Romero, thank you for that, uh, for that report.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I didn't realize you were out there talking to all the business, uh, cause, uh, Council, uh, Member Valentine and I ha- have been talking about going out, reaching out to some of the restaurants and see if we could somehow, uh, get them to, uh, do some outdoor dining. You know, they're limited in capacity inside now, but some of these restaurants have these huge sidewalks out in front of them, and I was wondering if, uh, if that would be something, we're gonna be talking about that later on in the meeting, uh, that, um, that, you know, get some feedback from them if they would find that attractive. Uh, because we're gonna try to make that as easy as we possibly can for them to put some tables out on the sidewalk and maybe, you know, change the look of the Boulevard, and, uh, probably now would be a good time to see how they feel about that. What do you think, uh, what do you think the, uh, how would that be received out there?
Um, just based on my, uh, research with some of the other, uh, local cities, uh, even the city that I live in, uh, I won't mention that one, but, uh, it creates a, a pretty nice ambience. Uh, I, I've seen dining that's been extended to the sidewalks, uh, extending into the parking lots, limiting some of the parking lots and actually, uh, taking to, uh, alternative streets. Uh, but it does create a nice ambience. I think that's, uh, some of the entertainment, uh, that we probably do need in our city. Uh, and so, uh, I believe a lot of the shopping centers, uh, restaurants will be open to that. Uh, we do have a, a chance as part of the safe business initiative, uh, to go out and contact all the different businesses, uh, from hotels, um, bank institutions, restaurants. So we've made our way through creating a database that is readily available for our command staff here. And as soon as we fully develop that, we'll be able to have that information, uh, available to us, and we probably can get some greater input from all the businesses.
Yeah, because i- i- if you're out there talking to them, at least say, hey, listen, this is possible now, uh, where it wasn't possible before. But anyway, um, you know, I think, uh, I think we wanna change Hawthorne Boulevard, I guess.
Absolutely.
This would be a great time to say, look, you can't put that many people inside your place right now, but we could put a few more out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, they're currently op- operating at fifty percent capacity, uh, of them. Uh, we haven't seen too much of a problem, at least when we go out and dine and meet with some of the, uh, local businesses. But certainly taking some of the dining experience outdoors, um, it does create a nice ambiance, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you wanna translate that into Spanish now? I know, we, we heard that, we do, you do the Spanish translation, so.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm very fluent, so be careful.
Sí, muy bien, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Uh, Councilmember Awad has a presentation on the agenda, the twenty twenty Awad Family Foundation Scholars. Go ahead, Councilmember Awad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, so of, of course, as we all know, the COVID, uh, shutdown kind of limited a lot of the high schools in the area to have their own kind of graduation and award ceremony. Um, so I kinda wanted to take the time to take these scholars, and they presented, they wanted us to do a little Zoom video to show their parents, so, uh, I'll cut my time short, just to let them show, uh, their side. Let me see.
Who's that?
Dumb guy. He's got a haircut, too.
Thank you guys for coming today. Uh, I know it's kind of unique and different now that we're, you know, instead of being out there and in the auditorium or out in the grass field, um, we're all here doing it virtually, but I kinda still wanted to give you guys some recognition of all the hard work you went through. Um, I know how hard it can be that you, you did all that work, you went through graduation, and then all of a sudden, you're stuck being in front of a computer. Uh, but I just wanted to take a time out of my day, uh, to show you the appreciation that I have for you, that, that you, you still were committed in, um, accomplishing all your academic goals. Um, at the same time, kinda give, you know, yourselves and something for your parents to also cherish and kinda keep with you, um, as you kinda progress forward through your academics. And, yeah, so let's see, let's start with Sophia, if you can unmute yours, I'll put mine on mute.
Okay, um, hi, my name is Sophia Hernandez. I am from Hawthorne High School, and I'm going to Cal Street Dominguez Hills for Business Management. My goal is to become the manager of a veterinary clinic and also, um, become certified for veterinary technician. Um, this year has been really not the way I planned. I was expecting to graduate the traditional way and then start, um, the university the traditional way as well. But because of COVID, um, and distance learning, it just felt very unnatural and, um, because of my school and my teachers and my peers, I was able to tr- sort of tran- transition, um, smoothly, and I think everything worked out in the end. Um, my plans for the summer are to remain in Seattle with my sister and, um, take a course for summer of twenty twenty and kinda get a head start on, um, getting my degree.
That, that's great. Um, so what kinda made you wanna choose, uh, you know, to be a veterinarian? Is there a special reason behind it?
Uh, yes. So since I was born, I've had a lot of animals, a lot of pets. At the moment, I have six, and also my sister is a veterinary technician, so she's kinda my mentor. She's been helping me through it all. Um, I think I, I care more about animals than I do people, and I feel like, um, I just wanna do my best and help them.
Well, great. No, tha- thank you for, uh, you know, coming out, spending some time, uh, and, and for your academic achievement. Uh, we wanted to give you the certificate alongside the scholarship. Um, next up, we'll have, uh, Luke Fernandez from Hawthorne High School, um, to give a little background on himself and his view on what he's going to accomplish next. Luke?
Uh, thank you so much. So I guess first off, I'll say, uh, hi, everybody. I'm Luke Fernandez, and I recently graduated from Hawthorne High School. I'm going to be attending UCLA, and my major as of now is undeclared, but my goal is eventually to get into the music industry and possibly pursue things like, uh, music production, which would be a lot of fun. And, um, as far as just the year in general, it's been pretty crazy. Everybody's been, uh, struggling and adjusting to, uh, COVID nineteen. But Hawthorne definitely did, um, as a school come together and support us, and we did. Have a great graduation, even though it's kind of strange and unexpected, but it definitely went well. And, uh, as far as summer plans, I just wanna go to the beach a lot and just relax before, um, I'm able to start my new year, which would be a lot of fun.
You know, uh, it's interesting that you picked music. Uh, what kind of genre are you interested in when, uh, when it comes to music? Like, you wanna like create, um, like the backend music production or, uh, audio mixing or?
Um, a little bit of audio mixing, but also, um, just creating music in general, cause my brother writes a lot of songs, so I'd like to just work with him on stuff like that. It'd be a lot of fun.
Uh, again, I appreciate you coming out. Um, all right, so, uh, now up next, we have, uh, Kamari Cage, um, from Losing Your High School. Uh, if you can, please give us a little background on, you know, what your next endeavors are, um, summer school, uh, summer plans, things like that.
Um, my name is Kamari Cage. I just recently graduated from Losing Your High School. Um, I plan on going to San Jose State University and majoring in animation. Um, due to COVID, like, I feel that my senior year was a little difficult and it was a little disappointing, but towards the end of the year, um, in graduation, it really helped. It made me feel better, uh, about, you know, the year, even though so much bad stuff has been happening. Um, I just felt, I felt, you know, thankful to be able to have a, a graduation, even though it wasn't traditional. I still was able to have, uh, a parade theme graduation at my school, so it made me feel very happy and felt very, I felt very accomplished. Um, as for this summer, I plan on working to make money for college, and I plan on doing a couple of art classes, um, as well, of a couple of college art classes, courses, just to just get me more prepared for, um, college overall, and just to, um, just to like, I don't know how to put it exactly, but basically, just to get better at art and just get more experience in it, so that, you know, coming into college, I am more prepared for whatever it may dish out to me.
Again, thank you so much for, for staying on that path to, um, you know, represent the city of Hawthorne the way you did, to represent the Losing Your High School as you did. Uh, so up next, from Losing Your High School, we have, uh, Joshua Viera. Uh, I tried again, I almost got it. Uh, but why don't you, uh, come out and, uh, kinda give the audience here watching, uh, a little background about yourself. Um, and again, I appreciate you coming out, spending your time, and saying so dedicated to, uh, education. Uh, Joshua, go up.
Awesome. Uh, so, yeah, my name is Josh. Uh, I recently graduated from Losing Your High School. It was a huge accomplishment. I'm super proud. Um, and I'm going, I'll be going to UC Riverside. Uh, at first, I went to, I was planning on going to San Diego, uh, but I changed my mind. We're going to UC Riverside. Um, and I'm still kinda debating whether what I wanna study. Uh, so my family is really like a big business type of family, like everyone has businesses. And so I feel like studying business is kinda like where my blood and heart is at. Uh, so it's either studying business or I also wanna go into aerospace engineering. Um, I don't know, for some reason rockets just like amazed me, like when, um, uh, SpaceX, uh, recently launched their rocket, it was just like, it was incredible, it was amazing. Um, so I'm still kinda debating whether I wanna go into those two fields. Um, in the future, I do wanna own a lot of real estate, uh, and that's one of the big reasons why I wanna go into business, kinda just learn, um, all of like business law and things like that, I go around there. Uh, so I'm still kinda debating, I don't know what I, uh, what I wanna go into. Uh, that's definitely something to think about, but, um, um, I think about, what I think about this situation particularly, um, with COVID, it was, uh, it was interesting, it was a little bit different, the whole distance learning kinda caught me by surprise. Um, uh, but good thing I was able to catch up. Um, but uh, I am super grateful that we did get a graduation. I know a lot of other schools, kinda like Gardena, they're kinda having their, uh, graduation online, and I would have liked totally sucked, so I'm super proud, uh, that we did have a parade. It was better than having it online, obviously. Um, but, yeah.
I guess pretty, so that's pretty cool, you're going to, uh, uh, UC Riverside, so that's where I, that was my alma mater, that's where I graduated, my business degree. Business is great, real estate, kinda same field I kinda looked into, too. Uh, what, what, you know, what made you wanna pick real estate?
Uh, uh, so, um, my parents are working a lot, like, uh, so I usually always have to take care of my little sisters and brothers. I have two sisters, four and five, and then a little brother, he's twelve. Uh, so I'm kinda like their role model and inspiration, I'm taking care of them. Um, and so my dad, I remember a long time ago, he had told me, like, once I look for a career, look for a career that isn't like pay you well, but at the same time, isn't gonna take up a whole bunch of your time, cause it's still important to have that family time, right?
Uh, uh, yes, so before we end this, uh, today, you know, I just wanna give your parents a shout-out for their dedication and all the love and headache of, uh, you know, making sure that you guys were able to get through school. Like, I know I gave my parents headache here and there. Uh, it's all love. Uh, so why don't you give a little shout-out, appreciation, uh, before you jet off to college? Luke?
All right. Um, so just thank you, Mom, thank you, Dad, for all the, uh, hard work you put in just to push me and make sure I'm doing my best in school, and just thank you for also supporting me in this new chapter, uh, in my life. That's gonna be very exciting, and also, uh, thank you, Nico, my, uh, older brother, really helped me a lot.
Uh, great. Uh, uh, we'll start with, uh, Kamari.
Um, I just wanna thank my mom, I'm leaving her, so I just wanna thank her for all the hard work that she's put in for these last forty years of high school and pushing me to continue on and supporting me through everything. I love you so much, and without you, I wouldn't have been able, been even able to make it to college, so. Thank you, I love you, and I hope to make you proud.
That was beautiful, I almost cheered up. Uh, uh, so Sophia, why don't you go up next?
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mom and Dad. I couldn't have done it without you, and, um, I just wanna make you proud.
Viera, you're up.
Got it. Well, I just wanna take the time to say, uh, thank you, Mom and Dad. I really love you guys. Um, without you guys, without your moral support and just your support overall, I really couldn't have done it without you guys. Uh, so thank you so much for that, and, um, everything I'm doing in West University, studying, working super hard, it's all for you guys. Uh, so I love you guys. Thanks.
Yeah, that's about it. So, uh, congratulations to all the students that won. Um, I wanna give a little shout-out to their parents. Um, looks like they had at least some kind of a good graduation because of the COVID, but again, uh, these are our high school students here living in Hawthorne, um, and they're killing it, so I'm, I'm proud of all of them, and I'm sure their parents are proud of them as well. That's all.
Thank you so mu- thank you so much, Councilmember Haddarwad. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communication, sir?
Yes, I can. Uh, during oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have a discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do. I actually have, uh, eight emails, um, so I'm, I'm gonna divide them by topics.
That'd be good. Thank you.
So, um, the first email is from Andrea. Hi, I'm writing regarding to all the homeless, uh, people that hang out in front of the ninety-nine cent store. After they disappear for a day or two, they leave their trash behind. The managers at the ninety-nine cent stores don't seem to care what the entrance to their store looks like. I drove by yesterday and the manager's standing at the entrance counting customers, and the pile is of trash is sitting right across from her. None, none of the ninety-nine cent stores look so filthy as when you walk in. Basically, the whole area of the store needs to be cleaned up daily or every few hours. As I'm heading home, I see two people, man and woman, walk out of the silver roll-up shed that is next to the big blue trash, and in front of the now-defunct Fallas. They proceed to close the roll-up door, but they are inside there. Can these businesses hire security guards to watch these areas or more police patrol? The people hanging out know that no one cares about these areas, so they frequent it more. Thanks for your time, Andrea. The next comment is from, um, from Ruben Sanchez from North Hawthorne Community Association. Uh, hi, uh, City Clerk. On April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, we submitted an email expressing concern on the blight impacting our neighborhood caused by RFK non-permitted car lot, where hundreds of cars are parked. We requested a public acknowledgement be given about this junkyard located in the center of North Hawthorne. We also need a public answer on who and when was any permit given, if any, for this location to have hundreds of cars to be abandoned there. Yours for a stronger Hawthorne, Ruben Sanchez. The next, uh, six will, um, are addressing a, a third topic. So the first email, um, in the past years, fireworks, both legal and illegal in Hawthorne, have gone from an occasional nuisance around Independence Day to a near constant barrage on our senses and a serious danger to life and property. Fireworks are now going off daily for months on end at all hours. Loud firework explosions are now interrupting our sleep patterns, affecting our physical and mental health, as well as our workplace performance. They are scaring our pets to the point we need to purchase animal anxiety medication. We are concerned about the dangers to our property. We cannot enjoy a simple, quiet evening at home, often not evening, not even in afternoon, without our eardrums being assaulted by jarring bangs. Unfortunately, current regulation, legislation, and fines do not seem to be enough of a deterrent, and enforcement has not been extensive enough to make a difference. Even on recent Independence Days, the amount of illegal fireworks being set off in unsafe ways has turned what was once an enjoyable celebration into something resembling a chaotic war zone. I've even seen people setting off illegal fireworks across streets, not up in there. Far too many are abusing the privilege of fireworks far too often, and now I'm afraid that the only recourse is to immediately ban both the sale and possession of illegal and, and safe and sane fireworks in Hawthorne, as well as greatly increase the fines, for example, from a thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. Of course, there should be a method for Of course, there should be a method for those that purchased fireworks legally to turn them in without repercussions. Increased fines should pave the way for a larger budget to expand enforcement. In a fire-prone state such as California, it is highly irresponsible for our city to allow the sale of public pyrotechnics which are purchased by non-residents and set off in more dangerous locations across the state. Our resident state doll- tax dollars are spent on battling wildfires every year and damages affect all our insurance rates. Some of us have to suffer through the poor air quality created by these wildfires. Ending the sale of fireworks in Hawthorne is the right thing to do for the city and California. The city or some coalition of residents should also consider a lawsuit against fireworks, fire manufacturers and vendors to compensate for fire damages to property enforcement and fire response costs, medical costs associated with exposure to prolonged firework misuse and the impact on property values. I implore the city council to take drastic steps to combat the suffering firework misuse is having on our community. Thank you, Jason Thornton. The next uh is from Anthony Arizabel. Fireworks are illegal, are legal in the city. Um I have to live in the city for three years and it's a nuisance and nobody seems to care. Can the police or council do something about it? Anthony, on one thirty-third street. Uh this me- next message is from Clara and Mica. Greetings, I wanted to inquire about the increase in firework activity and ask what is being done by the city to limit the extreme disturbance. Every night at all hours, we hear loud bangs. Not only is it unsettling, it's terrifying. As the parents of a young child, this disturbance has had an impact on sleep, which has taken a toll on the whole family's well-being. We're exhausted and need more support from the city to stop this immediately. The next one, public comment is from Ms. Megan Casper. Please, please, please patrol for fireworks or increase fines there every night till at least midnight. It sounds like the Fourth of July every night, something has to be done. Best, Megan Casper. Um the next one is from Mister and Mrs. Howard Brown. My husband and I have lived on one thirty-fourth place in Los Inex since two two thousand and four and we love it here, except for the fireworks. Our animals are terrified, we can't get a real night's sleep and our nerves are fried. Every neighbor we talk to says the same. It used to be one night, but now it starts in early May. It feels and sounds like a war zone and they set them off with impunity, ridiculous. Please enforce the current laws and or revise them in order to allow all of us who live here some peace. Thank you for your time. And the final public comment um is from Del Frank. Many residents of Hawthorne Manhattan Beach, Del Air and Longdale are being traumatized each evening by dangerous illegal fireworks which continued through the evening until after midnight with occasional boom at two AM or later. If one reviews the threads of complaints on Nextdoor, one sees that those especially suffering are parents with infants, pet owners, veterans with PTSD, folks who rise early to go to work and others who just wish an evening of peace and quiet in their homes. This year, the phenomenon started with Memorial Day weekend and has not stopped. Other communities, for example, La Harbor, Carson, et cetera, have been in the news with the same problem. Many of the Laos fireworks appear to be either homemade or imported and available on the internet. May I suggest that a task force of local PDs including Hawthorne PD, LA uh county sheriffs, et cetera, come up with a plan to discourage this conduct in the future. I understand the difficulty in providing, uh I'm sorry, the difficulty in proving violations are Hawthorne's ordinance. But in some case, residents have direct evidence of the perpetrators and incredibly, some of the scofflaws, not the brightest ones actually admit on Nextdoor to shooting off fireworks and and on and provide their names and Hawthorne addresses. One being so bold as to announce he'll be shooting off fireworks at thirty, eight thirty PM and inviting others to come to view. Thank you, Del Frank. That is the end of public comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, alright, so there's no further comments? Alright, oral communications is closed, so order. Mr. Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
Mister Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seventeen was pulled. Item eight, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting on June ninth, twenty-twenty. Item nine, approval of waiver of full reeings, resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item ten, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item thirteen, resolution number eighty-two oh four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California approving the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen development impact fee annual report pursuant to government code section six-six-zero-zero-six B. Item fourteen, resolution number eighty-two oh seven, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California ratifying the emergency administrative organ- order regarding effects of COVID nineteen and the effects efforts to this, the city's efforts to address consequences of restaurant closures and limitations on the reopening pertaining to outdoor dining issue, June tenth, twenty-twenty. Item fifteen, resolution number eighty-two oh eight, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California authorizing the city to apply for the local early action planning LEAP grant and city manager execution of professional services agreement with JWA Consultants, Inc. for preparation of the grant application. Item sixteen, resolution number eighty-two oh nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California authorizing approving and ratifying the submittal of the fiscal year twenty-nineteen Edward Byrne Memorial Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program local solicitation for adoption.
I make a motion.
Oh, I I want to pull number fourteen for discussion, please.
Was it uh, was it, did anybody second this already?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, so um is any, every, so what I, we'll go ahead and we'll pull out, um which was the item that you could pulled out?
Fourteen, please.
Alright, so we'll we'll make a motion, okay, we'll vote on everything except fourteen, okay? So I make the motion to vote on all items except fourteen.
Oh, you second, okay.
Okay, so it's been seconded, alright, so.
Seconded by Montero.
Yeah, please vote, roll call, please.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Sorry about that, um item fourteen, discussion?
Yes, thank you. So in twenty-fourteen, I initiated an outdoor dining ordinance which was passed by the council. At the time, we were trying to spur restaurants to set up outdoor dining facilities, hoping it would draw increased business since people like the sense of community that dining outdoors brings to a community. The applicant would have to obtain an encroachment permit and pay a fee for the permit. Tonight, because of the impact of coronavirus on our restaurant businesses, we have ratified or we will ratify the order that was put in place by the city manager on June tenth. This is an opportunity for the council to have a positive impact on our businesses. The hope is by temporarily waiving the planning and public works fees associated with setting up outdoor dining, more restaurants will be spurred on to do so and it will be a boost to their bottom line. Summer is here, people want to eat outdoors and with coronavirus still active, more people will feel safer if they're eating outdoors. Also, we are expediting these permits so that they can be obtained faster. I move approval of resolution eighty-two oh seven.
I second that. Okay, please, uh please vote. Um quick, a quick comment, this is a great, this is a great idea. It's going to bring synergy along Hawthorne Boulevard. Um it's what the city needs in order to draw people towards Hawthorne Boulevard and therefore draw other other, even other restaurants that might want to locate. I mean, we have an overabundance of nail salons. Uh nail salons, dental shop, dental offices, real estate offices? Uh I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Oh, you know, we dental offices, nail salons, so um I think this is a good move and it's going to create a domino effect that's going to grow the Hawthorne Boulevard. Right, Councilmember Tayeda? I was just teasing you, man.
No, no.
But there used to be a real estate au- uh office on every corner years ago, there there are.
Probably.
So, uh roll call, vote?
Alright, Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Excellent. Mister City Manager? Um I didn't skip anything. Okay, Mister City Manager, your consent calendar, please?
It's uh, Mister Mayor, I have items twenty-one through twenty-three for your approval tonight.
Thank you. I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank, thank, thank you to all of you. So I guess now we're at the elected officials' reports and recommendations section. Um before that.
We have the city attorney's consent calendar, right?
Did I skip that? Okay, Mister City Attorney, your consent calendar, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I just have one item, number twenty-five.
I move?
Second.
Please vote.
Second by Montero. Uh Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Um yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
So I think for this next section, um I wanted to go ahead and talk about, I have something here. Alright, so uh before we go on to the uh council members' reports, um I wanted to just let the community know that Mrs. Darlene Love, a great booster in the community, a great member of our community that was, that lived here since nineteen fifty-three uh when she came here and married young and raised two boys and uh was involved in so many, many clubs. Um and was always present at all our council meetings, uh passed away. So uh I want to give our, my council member colleagues an opportunity to say a few words and honor her. Um I for myself, when I started uh before two thousand and nine, before I was elected as a council member, I was on the Civil Service Commission for about six years. And her and I, we served together on the Civil Service Commission and she was always a welcome presence. Uh her wisdom was utmost and uh as I've told people, she was a second mother to many, many of us. Always giving us a uh great advice, wisdom, um steering us in the right path. And uh I mean, she's going to certainly be missed. Uh so many people have already, uh have heard that she passed away. And uh I mean, people are very, you know, are very sad and upset, but um she went through a couple of invasive heart surgeries, uh and you know, she's, she was tired. And uh she's with the Lord and uh may she rest in eternal peace. And she's made Hawthorne a better place, so I mean, it hurts me. My family, when they heard, they, you know, everybody cried and, you know, because she was such a welcome presence and she was always a a good friend, a good neighbor in the city of Hawthorne. So I'd like to give every single one of my council member colleagues an opportunity to say something.
I would like to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um I met Miss Love at the Holly Park Homeowners Association way back in two thousand and four when I first joined. And I was always impressed by her because she was not only a member of that association, I knew her at the time to be a member of the women, the women's club, um the Lions Club. Um I can't even remember all the clubs she belonged to, but I I do remember, I know she was also on a commission at the time and she encouraged me to 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 be active in Hawthorne aside from being um in the Holly Park Homeowners Association. And she was the first one, person I knew in the Holly Park Homeowners Association who had such a wide array of activities in the city aside from that association. So I would ha- I would have to say she was my role model because I looked at her, she would always come back with reports about what she was doing in the other, in the other associations and what the other associations were doing. And she always had so much wisdom and advice about what we should do and how we should handle our activities. And when I first decided to run for office, which was in two thousand and nine, as the first time I ran, I didn't win that year. But she was very encouraging to me, she really pushed me, she was really, she really said, you need to run for office, you need to, you need to go for it. And then when I didn't win, she said, well, you need to go for it again, so don't be discouraged. So I found her to be one of my strongest supporters on the Holly Park Homeowners Association. And um such a nice person, such a good example of everything we say about Hawthorne, when we talk about the city of good neighbors, everybody was her neighbor. She always welcomed everyone and and always um treated everyone as if they were family. So she's going to be very much missed, absolutely. She, there were, there, there have been a number of people who passed away in that, who were in that era and um I miss them all because they were, because Hawthorne, we have to keep up the tradition, uh we have to keep up the tradition of Hawthorne being the city of good neighbors. Um people like that uh are are an integral part of the city and and the city spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Mike Tayeda?
Um yeah, she was a special lady, you know, I, when I first started coming around um and she, you know, I was always talking about veterans and veteran issues and and she would always tell me that the VA, her husband was a veteran and he's blind now, but he, you know, she, she loved the veterans and the home that she's got, she got because of the veteran and her husband and and everything in her life that, you know, revolved around all the great things that she got from from the VA and her husband, you know, and she would always tell me that every time we got together and because I, she knew that that was something that I was really uh involved with and passionate about. And uh but watching her, you know, year after year, always there, always in the and every time she came to the podium, she never spilled a lot of poison out there, it was always nice, everything she said was nice. She always made a good comment, you know, she always made a uh a positive comment and so um yeah, she was a pretty special, she had a great sense of humor too, had a great sense of humor, so yeah, she's she's going to be missed, she was a nice lady, she always treated me very well. And uh I always liked talking to her and you know, everybody's going to miss her. She was a, she was somebody, somebody special, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh I'm going to ask Councilmember Awad?
Thank you, Mayor. Um so I wrote a few remarks, um uh this past Monday Hawthorne lost a truly good neighbor, community leader and trove blazer with the passing of Ms. Darlene Love. I cannot fully express how deeply saddened I am on Ms. Love's passing. I want to extend my condolences to her family and friends on behalf of my family, myself and the entire city of Hawthorne. Ms. Love was a kind, thoughtful woman who lived a remarkable life. Ms. Love worked tirelessly with the Neighborhood Association and developed leaders from the community. I will be forever grateful to her for sitting me down and teaching me about Hawthorne's less positive history. She gave me a personal experience of Hawthorne, it was known as a sundown city, and she was the first African American to serve on our Civil Service Commission and helped guide Hawthorne into a more aligned era. I'll always have, I've always had Ms. Love's support, but more importantly, she was my good friend. I will miss her, but never forget her.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Uh I'm going to ask uh City Treasurer, David Patterson?
He's actually not on the.
Uh thank you.
Or is it, oh yes.
I am. I appreciate it, Mayor. Um I don't have anything prepared, I don't have a lot to say, but um I'm just truly saddened by this loss. Um Darling Love was one of my favorite people. Uh just one of my favorite people, period. And um she expressed so much uh love and affection to me and my daughter, I always ask about my daughter. She just appreciated her for so many reasons. She was everywhere at all events. Every time I come to an event, I always look out for her. for so many reasons. She was everywhere at all events. Every time I come to an event, I always look out for her. And oftentimes would see her. Uh, she's a great example in our community about leadership and, and civic involvement and community involvement and in really even being an example for African Americans in the city. Uh, fought a lot of discrimination and racism throughout the years and still showed up with, you know, a smile with love. Um, very encouraging. Um, th- th- this is definitely a loss that I'll, you know, I'm gonna feel for a while. City is not going to be the same without her. Um, this type of presence that she had in our city is what makes our city a city and a community. And so I'm definitely gonna miss her. That's all, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mister City Treasurer. Uh, Mister City Clerk?
Yeah, um, yeah, so I'm definitely just like everyone else, really gonna miss uh, Miss Love and, uh, just like David shared, she would ask about, uh, my son Pablo, um. And it's, you know, she would compliment me on being a good dad and, you know, I, I get that from some people, but when it came from Miss Love, it, it was very special, when, you know, when you get that kind of compliment, so, um, she just cared so much about the community. Um, it wasn't about her, you know, she did things on behalf of others, um, and it was genuine. Um, and it was very telling, we did a, a memoriam for her on Nextdoor and Instagram. And it was amazing how many people had all these comments about her, of who she was and um, what she did for them, how she treated them. So, um, yeah, I, I was, I'm gonna read a couple of the comments, cause I felt like it, it provides a nice glimpse, uh, to her kind spirit. Um, and you know, I'm gonna keep it short, but, um, I think it's worth sharing. Um, so someone shared, Darlene Love was a wonderful woman and Mrs. Hawthorne, no doubt in anyone's mind. My thoughts and prayers go out to her family, Robert. Um, my condolences to the family, Darlene was a pillar at Oliver, Olivet Lutheran. I remember her fondly for always remembering my family no matter how many years we were apart. God gave us a loving spirited friend and may she go home and take her seat with grace and love, the Wolfher family. Third person, uh, she was a respected leader in Hawthorne, in the Hawthorne community and will be dearly missed. I will personally miss her contagious smile and upbeat personality. Send you P. Um, and in closing, uh, Miss Love was a true inspiration and leader. With a commitment to this community that has been a true gift to those of us who have seen her in action. She always had a warm smile and a tight hug and an unparalleled sense of style. She spoke the truth to power and defended those who needed it. She will be sorely missed by everyone her life touched. Fly free, Miss Love, until we meet again, Kyo O. So, we're gonna miss you, Miss Love. Thank you for everything you did for our community. Thank you for making the city of Hawthorne a better place.
Thank you, uh, Mister City Clerk. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Alex Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna apologize if I start crying, right? So, cause you guys know that Miss Love was my second mother. My mom, my real mom died in nineteen ninety-five and I met Miss Love in nineteen ninety-eight. And she took me in. Uh, she was a, I know, a mentor, a teacher, a mother to me because, you know, wherever I go, Miss Love went with me. To the gallants at the, you know, Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club. She was part of the Monita Gardens Improvement, you know, the nonprofit that was formed in nineteen ninety-five and and she was on my board since nineteen ninety-eight until yesterday. She was part of the South Bay, uh, no, Whip, you know, the Pacifica House, the Behavioral Health Service. Women, you know, of the year, distinguished, you know, she served at El Camino College. Uh, so, so she was a woman with so many talent and passion. And also she had compassion for everyone. I know, and she was a, a church lady, you know, the, uh, Oliver Lutheran in Holly Park. Yesterday, when I put the bio of Miss Love on Facebook, I had received hundreds, hundreds of comments about Miss Love. And I received dozens of phone calls, you know, expressing the sympathy because they know that Miss Love was very close to me, to my heart. And I'm tremendously, like I said, I, I lost another mother. And I don't have no words to express what Miss Love have meant to me. Uh, and we going, all of us going to miss Miss Love because she's, I, I don't, I don't know how even to think about not to see her anymore. But I did spoke to her Saturday. And she told me, Alex, I am ready to go see my Creator. Anyway, she sent me a picture of her sitting on a wheelchair with no hair. So, at least I know she was ready and I know, you know, God, the heavens have gained an angel. We lost one. But she will be watching over, over us because she will be an asset to God and to heavens and we will definitely miss her and and I spoke to Derek Love and Stephen Love, so, you know, they're preparing to see how they're gonna do the memorial service and, and the funeral. Cause you know, during this pandemic, the funerals is different. So I'll keep you guys posted. And I'll probably will tell you where to send flower anytime comes. Um, but we thank all of you for your prayers, for your love, words about Miss Love and we lost, all of us, we lost a mother. Hawthorne did lost a mother. And and she will rest in peace with God on her, on her side. So thank you for allowing us to express our feelings and, and our passion and and thank you, thank you, all of you in the community that have expressed the condolence to the family and to myself because she said, I was her son. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Gracias. Uh, we have a, we have a proclamation. I think it's appropriate that, um, people see the type of involvement she had in our community. So I am gonna kind of go through this, uh, so that you guys can understand uh, why she impacted so many, uh, of us. The Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, our council members, colleagues and people on the community. Uh, she departed this past Monday, June twenty-second at Centinela Hospital. She was born in September seventeen, uh, September seventeen nineteen thirty-five to Maxine and Janiv Nash. She was a sister of two brothers, so she had two brothers, Billy Ray and Elvis Lee. And although she was born in Sulfur Springs, Texas, so she was a Texan, um, she resided in Hawthorne since nineteen fifty-three, where she married, uh, married Laverne G. Love and became mother of two sons, Stephen and Derek. And she was also the grandmother to Stephen Ross Love. Miss Love had always been a community activist since she graduated high school while she was here in Hawthorne for sixty-seven years. That's in nineteen fifty-three, folks, that she's been here since. Uh, Darlene Love served in many organizations, including the Hawthorne's Women's Club, the Hawthorne Lions Club, Monita Garden, Gardens Improvement, the South Bay Whip, the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, the Holly Park Homeowners Association, the Hawthorne ELC Women of the Lutheran Church, Pacifica House Advisory Board, BHS, the Behavioral Health Services Advisory Board. Um, as a civil service commissioner, um, she was currently a civil service commissioner. And as the, and the Sulfur Springs Club, at Sulfur Springs, Texas, as president of their club back there. Um, while she was in high school, I assume. She was a devoted and active member of the Olivet Lutheran Church as a deaconess, so she was a religious. And she gave her, of her time unselfishly. Her talent and resources helped several hundred people, many, many people, organizations and projects that benefited both young and old in and around Hawthorne. And Miss Love was a recipient of many awards such as the State Senator Distinguished Woman Award, the State Senate Extraordinary Citizen of the Thirty-Fifth District, the Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year. Certificate of, she received a certificate of appreciation from the National Campaign for Tolerance. Uh, at, she was, uh, she attended El Camino College and received awards from them. Um, also she was a booster and participant in the Hawthorne School District's activities. The Center for Improvement of Childcaring, the Black Family Ministries Project, the City of Hawthorne Police Department, she was a great supporter with the K-nine dinners and all the dinners that she worked with, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the Hawthorne President's Council Volunteer of the Year. She was a member and she, I helped lead the Hawthorne President's Council with, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem as well. Uh, she was the Hawthorne Women's Club Volunteer of the Year, uh, City of Hawthorne Volunteer of the Year, Holly Park Homeowner Association Honoree, City of Hawthorne Seniors Commissioner, uh, on the, she was on that commission too, shows she's been, been involved. And I remember when my mom, in the nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-nine or seventy-eight, when, uh, my little brother was born, um, when we went to, my mom wanted to join the Women's Club. That, that was the time when Betty Ainsworth, uh, Jenny Lambert and Darlene Love were members of the Women's Club in Hawthorne nineteen seventy-eight. And they were the first people, she was one of the first people uh, persons that welcomed my mother to the Women's Club. My mom remembers that. So when I told her that she passed away, oh, la señora, la señora Darlene Love. So she was really sad to hear that she passed. So, I mean, she's been here a long time. She's impacted us and we could, she is an angel and she is a beloved mother of Hawthorne and we create, we pay tribute to her for her years of dedication, achievement, her achievements, the community and the civic uh, pride that she has in the city of Hawthorne. So, uh, we ask the good Lord to, uh, allow her and now she will be resting in peace. And that, um, may the perpetual light of God shine upon her. So this is proclaimed this twenty-third day of June twenty-twenty. So I'd like to ask my City Council members that we just have uh, one final, uh, moment of silence in her honor, please. Thank you, City Council.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
This is side note, um, my real mother actually was born also on September seventeen nineteen twenty-five.
Whoa.
Miss Love was born September seventeen nineteen thirty-five.
That's.
On the same day, we're ten years apart.
Destiny.
Yes.
Destiny. Okay, ju- uh, so now, um, thank you all, thank you. So we'll, we'll, we'll give this to her family at the appropriate time. I'll pass this on to Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Yes, for sure. Uh.
I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, Vargas, uh.
Yes, Council, uh, Arnie, please go ahead.
If I, if I, if I may, I, I have an announcement, I, I wanted to introduce, uh, after twenty-eight years, uh, I want to introduce Hawthorne Airport Manager. Uh, airport, you know, uh, last airport manager, Bob Terimburn left, left us in nineteen ninety-two. I, I am so pleased to introduce, uh, our new airport manager that I am very proud of. And, uh, that's Guido Fernandez.
Guido.
So Guido, are you there?
I, you know.
You know, finally, um, you know, uh, it is not like, uh, airport is not an orphan that I had to carry on my shoulder. Uh, now it got his own dad. Guido, go ahead.
Hola, Guido.
Hi, hi, everyone. Good evening, honorable mayor, council members and everyone. I just, uh, wanna thank, of course, Arnie for this opportunity and everyone as well. It's an honor and privilege to be able to serve this city. Excited to, uh, many more years of working.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, welcome.
Guido. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Guido. Thank you.
Welcome. Well, welcome into your new role.
Thank you.
So now we'll go towards, uh, now, uh, the meeting's almost over, so I'm going to ask our City Council colleagues to conclude, maybe we can, um, see how smoothly and efficiently we can get through the elected officials reports and recommendations. Um, but one of the things, I'm just gonna ask our City Manager, in light of the situation with the fireworks, um, if you can have in- increased patrols in general during this time, if you could ask, uh, our police chief to coordinate the increased patrols and to be able to, uh, have a ready, uh, intake of method in which to intake the calls for the fireworks and any other issues. So if you just increase the patrols during this time.
Yes. Absolutely.
Mister, uh, uh, Mister City Attorney? Mister City Attorney, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna ask to see if you could, uh, generate a legal confidential with regards to the possible, uh, elimination of all fireworks. If you could just generate like a legal confidencies, a confidential with regards to, uh, what we could do, what the options are, uh, and what other cities have done around us in order to combat like the, the situation with the fireworks.
Okay.
And, uh. Okay.
Through the chair, can I add to that directive?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Russell, if you can also, uh, you know, uh, bring up the, uh, the ordinance about the fines and jails time and, and to see if we can review that, to see if it's something that we will, uh, try to increase.
So. Absolutely.
To make sure that people, it's a scourge to, uh, do these illegal fireworks that's been going on since May. Right? Because now, now we know that they're not just getting these fireworks from, uh, Nevada or Arizona, but also they're getting them online. And, and it's a problem that is going, going on in all the cities from LA to Pasadena to San Bernardino, to Lawndale, to us, so it is a, almost like another firework pandemic.
Oh, no, I don't think you can use that word, that's not. We gotta call something else, that's not. There's nothing like the coronavirus pandemic, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. Well, one, one final comment on that is to, that everybody on the council acknowledges that we do have rules in the books. Uh, fireworks are illegal, there are citations that are given. So the concern is that, uh, as you can see the various comments that all of the City Council members have received, that maybe the fines aren't sufficient enough, maybe they're not determined. So we gotta revisit that and take action because, uh, we're tired of it, uh, the residents are tired of the situation, so we've gotta move on something. Uh, ma'am?
Through the chair, yes, I'd like to, uh, also address the issue of, um, the ninety-nine cent store and the, um, the, uh, uh, apparently the homeless issue around, uh, surrounding it and the, and the, the, um, unclean atmosphere in that area. So, um, I would like to, um, can, can we have someone, uh, in- investigate that? Can, can the City Manager investigate that and find out what the problem is there and, and what, what needs to be done? Because we do have, um, we have, we have the cleaning ordinance on the books, so, so businesses are required to clean their premises. They have a, they have a cleaning schedule ordinance. So, so the, we have the tools available and I just wanna make sure they're being used. So Mister City Manager, can you look into that, please, and see what the problem is at the ninety-nine cent store?
Oh, noted, uh, Councilmember Valentine, we'll get.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valentine, go ahead and just finish your comments right now at this time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I've got, um, the, the first thing I wanna say is, uh, I want to belatedly recognize Juneteenth Day, which ha- which has been exploding in popularity over the past, this, actually this year. And which actually has been celebrated by the Holly Park Homeowners Association, now known as the Holly Park Neighborhood Association since two thousand ten. And, um, I just wanna recognize Juneteenth Day. So that was the day that Texas slaves learned that they were free. Because of course, in nineteen, eighteen sixty-three, there was no internet. So when the slaves were freed, uh, in eighteen sixty-three, the slaves in Texas didn't learn about it until two years later on June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five, when General Gordon Granger came to Galveston, Texas, um, and, and, um, and, and told them that they, they were, they were, they were free at that time. Um, I'm, I'm just delighted that it has become so popular. I think it's a, it's probably been celebrated a lot in the south and the wa- and the Midwest, but we, we, we never celebrate. I think it's a, it's probably been celebrated a lot in the south and the wa- and the Midwest, but we, we, we never celebrated it as a nationwide holiday. And I think it's getting to be that popular where it may, it may become a nationwide holiday, and I certainly would encourage that. But, uh, unfortunately, uh, we couldn't have our nor, our usual pancake breakfast. Because the hall, we always have the Holly Park Homeowners Association Signature Pancake Pancake Breakfast. Our June nineteenth, our Juneteenth Day Pancake Breakfast, and we always have that, and this year we couldn't do it. But hopefully, we'll be able to have it next year. Um, I wanna make, uh, a comment about the civil unrest. Um, since the death of George Floyd, we have seen turmoil in our communities. As people all over the country responded with large-scale protests, mostly peaceful. But there was also arson and looting in some places, and many police officers have been injured. This resulted in many solutions being proposed hastily in most cases. Including calls in some quarters for dismantling or defunding police departments. And then the protests have also morphed into other social areas. And there have also been defaced, this, there has also been defacing and destruction of statues throughout the country. Which were deemed to be, to be racist by the protesters, but without the necessary debate and approval by city governments. So we on the South Bay Council of Governments, co- South Bay Council of Governments. Decided to hold a forum on this issue to address some of the issues. The protesters are dis- are, are, um, are concerned about and also, um. The relationship between the community and the police department. Questions, answering some of the questions is, as, as, is there any, um. Can you be both supportive of police enforcement and still stand up for communities of color? And also, um, what kinds of direction are we giving our police departments? Um, if, are they getting correct direction, clear guidelines as to how the community wants the laws enforced? Do they want them enforced? For example, um, how should they respond to loose arson and looting? Destruction of private property? Or how, how, what, what guidance have we given our law enforcement as to how to respond to that? So, we're going to try and answer some of those questions, um, at a forum that will be held on, um. June twenty-ninth by the South Bay Council of Governments. Um, you, I think you've all been sent a notice about it and I encourage everyone to join. Um, so, uh, we, we need to, we need to get, but we need to. Restore the confidence of all citizens in institutions of authority. And of course, the South Bay Council of Governments is a perfect forum to address these issues. Because it's a regional forum, the forum, there are sixteen cities. And all of the cities have the same problems. And we all want to see if we can find regional solutions, so we're going to have a very vigorous discussion about it. And, um. It were, and, and I also wanted to mention that, um, we're going to be talking about the Justice Act. Which was introduced recently by Senator Tim Scott, um, in the Senate. And which tries to, um, to address the issues of police reform. Um, accountability and transparency. And we'll, we'll be discussing that as well. So, um, I invite everyone, I invite all of the, um. Certainly the city council and certainly anyone, you know, certainly city council, uh, city staff. Law enforcement agencies to, uh, to log in and listen to our discussion. Um, let's see if there's anything else that I have. Oh. This is National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. And, um, I belong to the Nor- Los Angeles County West Vector and Vector Born Can- Disease Control District Board. Um, so, we're very concerned about the transmission of West Nile virus. Now mosquitoes are not known to transmit COVID nineteen. But infected mosquitoes can transmit West Nile vi- virus in St. Louis encephalitis to people throughout their bui- through their bite. Infections are often mild or asymptomatic, but they may cause significant cognitive and neurological symptoms in some patients. And possibly death. Since two thousand and four, West Nile virus ac- activity has been detected in all fifty-eight counties in California. And surveillance efforts have shown that the virus remains active and is endemic throughout Los Angeles County. In twenty nineteen, two hundred and forty-three human infections and six deaths were recorded throughout the state. In Los Angeles County, there were twenty-nine human West Nile virus infections and three deaths in twenty nineteen. Saint Louis encephalitis reemerged in California in twenty fifteen. And six cases were reported throughout the state in twenty nineteen. Now, how can you protect yourself? You need to always be con- to continue to be aware of mosquitoes and mosquito-borne diseases. You can eliminate the risk or, or reduce the risk by wearing repellent containing DEET, D-E-E-T. Pecan din, oil of lemon eucalyptus, or IR thirty-five thirty-five. When outside during periods of mosquito activity and ensuring window screens are in good condition. You should also regularly inspect your yards for standing water and tip out the water and toss out the source. Do not have standing water anywhere on your property, that is an attraction for mosquitoes. So this, this information I have sent to, um, to our city manager, um, so that it can be posted on the website. There's a lot of information and I only, um, I only gave a summary of it, but, uh. But it, we will be able to find it on the website. And, um. Other than that, I just wanna say happy Fourth of July, everyone. It is coming up soon and, um. Please don't forget to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, um, uh, I'm gonna ask our city clerk. Paul Jimenez.
All right, um, this, I'll keep this one short, so, uh, wanna thank everyone who's watching from home. Um, I wanna commend our neighbors for speaking up during public comments, so please continue to have your voice be heard. I welcome the opportunity to read your public comments. Uh, this is a reminder, for, for those of you who are not on Nextdoor or following us on Nextgr- Instagram, make sure you do so. Uh, we have some amazing interns who are doing some good work, providing some great resources. Um, just one example is, they have actually, they're walking, uh, the city of Hawthorne and checking out the small businesses. Uh, creating a list of what's open now and they're providing that list, um, on Instagram and Nextdoor, so. Uh, there's just a lot of good stuff on there, so I highly suggest, um, if you're not on it, get on it. If you know people in Hawthorne that are, aren't on Nextdoor or Instagram, make sure that they follow us. Um, and then for those who are participating in peaceful protest, uh, just pu- please be safe out there in terms of COVID nineteen. Cause it's still a real threat, um, and it just worries me when I see, you know, uh, people and doing, you know, uh, participating in peaceful protests. But they're not wearing masks, so, uh, please, you know, stay healthy, um, and keep the momentum for positive change going. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, our city treasurer, David Patterson, to give us his report.
I don't have anything at this point, thank you.
That was it? Okay. Tell us a joke or something, I don't know, something.
Hey, I can talk if you need me to, I, I'm taking the. For, uh, participating in the process, making your voices heard. Uh, and I definitely support the, uh, idea of, uh, seeing what can be done about this firework. But, uh, overall, uh, you know, thanks for, for participation and again, I commend the council for, um. Some of the smart financial moves that have been made, made over the last, uh, few council meetings, given what's happening with our economy and COVID nineteen. Um, our city manager, our assistant city manager, um, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Mister City Treasurer, thank you so much. Uh, we're gonna go, move on to Councilmember Mike DeGio.
Um, okay. I didn't, uh, get a chance to say hello to Elena. Uh, I, I watched, Elena was, uh, my neighbor on Hawthorne Boulevard and I would walk in front of her. Uh, nonprofit, uh, and watched her get started. And, uh, she's a ball of energy and she did a great job and she. Got a grant and moved, uh, up the street and now she's doing wonderful stuff, you know, she's terrific. Um, I, uh, I, I think, I, I, the report that Officer Romero gave, that was very interesting and very valuable information. And then, you know, I, I wanna touch on fireworks because. You know, I think that, you know, you gotta be realistic about what's really happening with, with fireworks. If you close down, uh, the nonprofits that sell fireworks on the Fourth of July. You're not gonna stop the problem, the problem is the illegal fireworks and you have to know that, you know? That the people that are blasting the street, um, those are illegal, they're gonna be doing that no matter what happens. And those are the ones that you have to go after, not the people that are going to sell fireworks for one day. Uh, and you can, we, you know, when it, when it comes to terms of veterans, you know? And, and I, I remember Kyle and I, Kyle from the Veteran, uh, Commission, we'd go around and around about that. But you have to realize that three of the five, uh, nonprofits. That are out there on the Fourth of July are all veteran organizations. You know, you got the, the American Legion, you have the BFW. And then you have the organization that, that I'm involved with, Wounded Heroes of America. And, you know, they're not, they, they look forward to that, you know? You know, they have to listen to a lot of stuff before they get the location that they're gonna get. But they're out there doing it and they love doing it and, and, uh, in order to get, uh, be able to sell fireworks. You have to be a nonprofit, I think that's a deal with the state of California. That they, they can't just, those, every, every fireworks stand is a nonprofit. Whether it's a little league, whether it's a veteran organization, whether it's, uh, whoever, it has to be a, uh, a nonprofit. But the important thing is, I mean, I ca- you could go, you could, you can really stretch this a little bit. Because, uh, in one of those emails, they're trying to equate fireworks in Hawthorne with wildfires. You know, things get a little out of hand with, when you're, uh, when you're, um, trying to make a point. And, and, and so you get a number of emails and that's true, you got ten, fifty, maybe you get twenty emails saying that. It bothers the animals and et cetera, et cetera. But you're not taking into consideration the hundreds of people that come with their children to buy fireworks at those stands for that week. You know, uh, they're voting too. They're voting with their feet, they're voting with their pockets, they're going over there and they're purchasing fireworks. It's not like you're shoving it down their throats or anything like that, you know, they love it. So, um, and to me, I'm a big believer in freedom, you know? Uh, and I think that June, uh, Juneteenth should be a, a holiday, i- i- it's a significant, uh. Day, so was seventeen seventy-six. You know, that was our nation's birthday. And, you know, for crying out loud, give us one day to celebrate and, and, uh. But I think that it has to be put in context, that if you close down the fireworks stand, which they try to talk about. Year after year, year after year, if you did that, you're not changing the problem. Because the problem's gonna continue because the, the, the real noise is from the illegal fireworks and nobody wants that. Nobody wants that, so focus on how you're going to do that, because all you're gonna do if you end up shutting down the fireworks stand. Is you're gonna hurt a handful of nonprofits that kinda depend on that income to operate what, whatever it is they do. So, um, I, 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 I think, I don't want it to be an overreaction. And, you know, you use a sledgehammer to kill a fly, the problem is, is really the illegal people that, the illegal fireworks. That are being blown up day in, day out, every night, at all hours of the night, you don't know if it's a gun, you don't know if it's a firework. But, you know, I agree with that, that's the problem. Not what you, the stuff that, that we sell is, uh, is, uh, makes a little bit of noise on the ground. And a little bit of light and that's about it. Uh, it's kinda ridiculous, people, you know, how money goes up and smoke. Anyway, I, I just wanted to say something, uh, that, that Alex said about the real estate offices. And, um, you know, I, I, um, I've been around, I've been around this town so long. I re- I forget, I've realized how long I've been around because, uh, Jenny Lambert. Husband, Orland Lambert and I did some business together, that was back in the late seventies. Betty Ainsworth and I worked at the same real estate company. Uh, and so, there used to be a real estate office on every corner. The big guys, the Remaxes and the big franchises, they closed everybody down. So there's still a few of us hanging around, but a lot of, a lot of them are gone. And, um, I think that I honestly, I, I like the idea that they celebrate. The day that the slaves, uh, got their freedom. I, I can't imagine a, another bigger day than that, you know? So I, I hope, I hope it happens. Anyway, that's it for me, I think that, uh, the, the fireworks stand, you should go after the people that are breaking the law. I don't know how you're gonna do that, but if you close down the legal stuff, you're not gonna, you're not gonna solve the problem. That's my opinion.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Hidaro Watt?
Uh, thank you. Um, just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and participating, uh, wanna thank all the students as well for taking the time out of their summer. To be involved in, uh, both the, uh, Teen Prevention Vi- Violence Prevention Program and the, uh. You know, and then paying attention to their academics. Um, you know, the last thing I wanna touch on, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big concern, we've all been talking about is fireworks, um. You know, you do have a lot of angry residents, um, regarding the fireworks, um, a lot of them don't really know what ordinance and. You know, what kind of citations they already give out. Um, so, when I did, when I sent out a survey to kind of see where the residents stand on it, um, a lot of them had no idea what we were enforcing. Um, so I placed it in that we do give out, it's a, it's, it's, it's considered a misdemeanor if you're firing off fireworks. Outside of July fourth from ten P M, uh, ten A M to midnight on July fourth. Um, it's a thousand dollar fine, it's considered a misdemeanor and there's also the potential of being in jail for six months or both. Um, so it's a very sh- harsh, um, ordinance, um. But the, the difficult part is, is really is trying to enforce it and catching these residents in, in the act. Um, so the, the whole idea is, from sending that survey out, um, we asked their opinion. And then through that, we were given over five hundred responses so far, it's still climbing, which is great. Um, it's affecting their quality of life, it's affecting the quality of life for veterans and everyone. Um, a lot of people are overwhelmingly wanting a ban on all fireworks, which is, um, unique. This is like usually the first time you're, you're seeing that kind of push. Um, so I'll be working with the residents to develop solutions which might include, um, a full ban on all fireworks. Um, it is a way to kind of make it easier to enforce and find out where they're coming from. We're also working on an online platform where they can, uh, geosite and actually kind of tag. Where in Hawthorne they're seeing the most occurrences, um, to help our code enforcement and police officers to actually go into. Um, enforcing our, um, already strict ordinance and resolutions. Um, the other thing that, uh, we wanted to touch on is, um. When it came, when it comes to the protesting, there have been, I think, two so far in Hawthorne, luckily both have been exceptionally peaceful, there was one this past Monday. Um, so I went out there, gave out masks to make sure that they were, uh, staying safe, as our city clerk mentioned. It is, COVID nineteen is still out there, it's still an issue, um, so going out there providing all masks was, was, was great to see the residents involved. It was kind of unique to see all three, you know, residents from three sixty coming out of their homes and jumping in as well. Um, but yeah, those are the two things that, um, currently working with and working on, um, especially creating a, um, resident committee. Almost like a task force and a bunch of residents wanna jump on it now, of finding different ways that they themselves can help the city of Hawthorne. Enforce our already strict ordinance and, uh, uh. Enforce our already strict ordinance and citations. That's the hardest part is finding the locations, finding the individuals that are breaking the law with the illegal fireworks. It's gonna take a group effort, but that, so far, there is some movement, so just letting the residents know on that. And at the next council meeting, when the survey closes, I'll bring out those responses and we can have, look at it as a city together. And really hear their concerns regarding fireworks and the best way to address it. Besides that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Amir Potem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just, you know, to say that, you know, happy belated Juneteenth and happy belated Father's Day, that was our last weekend. The firework, I don't know if the chief can listen to, if, if it's possible for us to create a dedicated line, like a hot, a hotline. That is anonymous, that people can call and report where the fireworks are coming from. Is the chief listening? No? Okay, chief is not listening. But we can probably create a, 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 you know, hotline, like that, a dedicated line, Arnie. That can go through the police department, so they will not be using, you know, the, the regular phone. That is business, police business, you know, just a hotline that we can keep tracking. And then people can leave their addresses and anonymous addresses and stop there, that so the police can, can follow up on that. Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I do have to say that, you know, graduation, you know, the, the little kids at the castle, we, we did a virtual. Not a virtual, but we did a virtual and also a drive-through graduation. So we got a lot of car going through a court area avenue close to the castle and then even people from the apartment building came up to applaud. All the, all the parents drive with the kids. And I wanna thank the chief again for the sending one of the police officers over there to, you know, flashing their lights. And I wanna thank the chief and Lieutenant William, Bobby William, for making the ninety. Ninety-five birthday of the Jack Woodman happy one. They could, the police department send the police officers and also with the fire trucks and everything, so they were very happy. To celebrate that man ninety-five years old, that was a veteran from the Second World War and that who lives right here in Hawthorne. Just a few announcements, for example, the Hawthorne School District. Will continuing providing food through the summer, you know, they just started on June twentieth to, until August thirteenth. People can go pick up food from nine A M to eleven thirty A M, Monday to Wednesday, at the private middle school on Prairie. And Tuesday and Thursday, nine A M to eleven thirty A M, at Washington School on Al Segundo side. Okay, so again, Hawthorne School District is still providing breakfast and lunch to all the students of Hawthorne School District. And actually, all the families who have childrens under eighteen can go and pick up food. Again, Monday and Wednesday at the private middle school and then Tuesday, Thursday at the Washington School. Also, thanks to, you know, the Hawthorne School District and this program called Footstep to Brilliant. We wanna have a, a virtual summer program. That any family that lives in Hawthorne can get access to the web, to the app, it's like an app, they don't have even to have a. Call, website, that they can just go to. W W dot my F two B dot com, resistor slash forward Hawthorne. Or they can go on the website of Hawthorne School District and log in and they can have free virtual summer school for pre-K. To third grade on, 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 every day, okay? On Monday the twenty-nine, I'm co-sponsor a food distribution that's gonna be done. From nine A M to twelve, it's a community food distribution that is thanks to the, you know, Los Angeles Food Bank. The Labor Community Service, the Federation, and the machinist units right here on Hawthorne Boulevard. On twelve one zero nine Hawthorne Boulevard, so one two one zero nine Hawthorne Boulevard. But the pickup food's gonna be a drive, a drive, a drive-through towards the Broadway, towards the Hawthorne Way and. Exit on one twenty. So again, on Monday, June twenty-nine, from nine A M to twelve P M, anybody can go pick up food, is a drive-through pickup. And they are going to try to serve about twelve hundred families, okay, so they have food that can feed twelve hundred families. So it's a drive-through event on Monday to twenty-nine, nine A M to twelve P M. And I know the, the prize is already on our cable and also on the social media. Like again, it's a co-sponsor, you know, with the Mayor Potem and this Food Bank of Los Angeles and, and the. Labor Union that is trying to distribute food to our community, so we know, you know, food is very important. A lot of people are still out of work and food is, is the man that a lot of people need some food. I don't know if you guys are aware, but I, I received a call that's, I don't know where or what time. They said that it's gonna have a meeting somewhere on Thursday. That people are talking about defunding the police department, so I don't, and I don't know if any of you receive. Any email or phone calls about meeting on Thursday about to defund the police department? So just keep that in mind that, you know, like I said again last time, we cannot, we, we do not have the luxury of defund our police department. Because it's very important for our safety and our community. Again, I wanna thanks also Mr. Hidaro Watt for bringing Elena Maloney to give us about that domestic violence program because it's very important about teens. Bullying and, and, and dating violence issues out there. And also the scholarship programs, because, you know, like I said, this year, Ms. Love always went with me to Hawthorne High. And, and losing it to give scholarship and this year, of course, everything was done virtual. And, but we were able to give four scholarships to the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, five to Hawthorne High School. One losing it and one DaVinci, so a total about. Eleven scholarship went to those high schools. So it, it was been a year of challenge that the kids had to be online and virtual classrooms, but they end up having a, a good end of the year. And we look forward for the next fall and the summer. Again, happy Fourth of July to everyone. Please try not to shoot fireworks before the Fourth of July, because like we said, they have a lot of boom out there. And unfortunately, we know people love fireworks. And the statistic is, is that a lot of people are frustrated being at home, not doing nothing, so they're just shooting fireworks. So we hope that we will come up with some solution. But because, you know, fireworks has been part of our city for many, many years. It was a voting process, the people of Hawthorne voted to have fireworks. So even if we go to eliminate fireworks or not eliminate fireworks, I believe we would have to let the people of Hawthorne decide that. Okay, because it was a voting that they vote. To have fireworks for the city of Hawthorne, for the legal fireworks, for the, for the nonprofit. And, and, and it was legal, so now it's had become an absurd that everybody's trying to get. Fireworks online and the other states and, and shoot those illegals fireworks all over the city. Again, happy Fourth of July and again, thank you for all of your words about Ms. Love and we will miss her.
Thank you.
I have a go back.
Okay, go for it. Yes.
Thank you, okay. I, I think we have to have a discussion about illegal fireworks. Aside from the discussion we have about legal fireworks and whether to ban them. Is a separate question about how are we to treat illegal fireworks? What are we expecting from our police officers when it comes to enforcing illegal fire, enforcing the ban on illegal fireworks? What do we want them to do? I think we need to give them guidance and I would like to have a conversation about that. We can either wait when, until we discuss the issue of the ban, but I don't think it's, it's questionable, you can wait because of the fact that. Fourth of July is almost upon us and, and, and illegal fireworks have already been. Fired up for the past few weeks and probably will be used after, after, after the Fourth of July. So I'm only addressing the question of illegal fireworks. What kind of enforcement effort do we want from our police officers when it comes to illegal fireworks? I think that's a question we need to ask.
Thank you, ma'am.
And answer.
Any more go backs? That's final for everybody?
So, so do we want to have a, put that on the, have a special meeting on that or what do we wanna do?
Look, how about we receive some of the, the special, what you call it, the legal confidential? Have Mr. Yarara provide some, some information, then we could decide if we wanna proceed with the special meeting and when.
Okay.
It might be a couple meetings worth that he might need to draft this up. Because, you know, the next meeting's going to be after the Fourth of July, so at that point, we can just comfortably just discuss this and, you know. But it's up to you. I'll leave that up to you, ma'am.
Well, only because I think that. That, that this, the, the issue is going to be, be very, the, the issue has to be decided now because of the fact that. Illegal fireworks are being fired off now, before the Fourth. So the question is, how do we want our police to approach it? Do we want tough enforcement? Do we want mild enforcement? Do we want no enforcement? What do we want? I think they have to be guided by us. That's why, that's why I'm saying this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let me just say something about, it's about the census. I received an email today about that the census, we are only fifty-eight point seven percent respond. So we're still short of our goal. Okay, so again, I'm making an appeal to all of you out there, please tell people to fill out their census form online. Because we're only at fifty-eight point seven percent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right, so. Any more go backs from anybody? Okay. So I wanna just thank everybody on our city council team, our, our treasurer, our city clerk, staff. For coming together and working hard, we're in a good situation. Unlike most cities, we've been able to weather the storm and we're very viable, we have strong. Cash, cash reserves, because we did what we had to do, did things right, there was no hoky, hanky panky. There was, you know, we had a stable government these last four and a half years, so I wanna thank every single one of you on the city council. For your participation and your part that you've always played in keeping our city afloat and moving in the right direction, so thank you all. Thank you very much to Councilmember Hidaro Watt for his contribution to the community on behalf of his family. That was really good of you, nice of you, so thank you for that. And I wanted just to go down the quick list of things. So with the recent killing of Mr. George Floyd by the Minneapolis Police Officer, there was a lot of angst out there. There's a lot of emotions that people needed to express. And so I'm just, I'm happy to report that in the city of Hawthorne, there was actually four protests that took place. One in Holly Glen, the Holly Glen neighborhood, the other one in front of the police station. The other one was youth, youth protesters. At the Jim Thorpe Park and the other one that started at Delar Park, so there was actually four of these protests that took place in the city of Hawthorne. I was there at two of these, listening to the people who were peacefully protesting, of letting them know that we're listening as they're elected officials. And I, I'm very proud of, of the Hawthorne residents and people from the neighboring cities and from our area that came and expressed themselves. And we are listening, we as a community are listening, our police are listening, law enforcement's listening. And we need to do what we need to do to be able to make sure that everybody's treated fairly, okay? And that black lives do matter, all lives matter, black lives matter. So it's very important that we make sure that we accept that and embrace that. So there were no incidents of, of looting in the city and everything was very peaceful. So there were concerns from our community members and our businesses, but as they discovered, things happened very smoothly and people were able to express themselves. And I did see, like, pretty much all of our city council members out there, listening to the concerns of the community that came out and expressed themselves. So kudos to all of you. With regards to the fireworks situation, everybody's been doing their part here on the city council to be able to address this issue. It always seems that every year it's, it gets louder and louder and it starts earlier and it's later, then later. So I know that some of our council members have been receiving calls, people are addressing and coming up, trying to come up with solutions. We have laws on the books, so we need to take a look at that and see what we, what direction we move forward. So I've received calls and emails from our community and I put a, a group of my own, an ad hoc group. That we put together that are giving solutions to our police chief and there's about three solutions that this group has passed along to our police chief. And he, he may be implementing at least one of these tactics during this time. Obviously, I can't let people know what that tactic is or else it would be tipping people off and people, you know, we wouldn't be able to use that. So I appreciate Police Chief Mike Ishi for engaging with these residents and listening to this and embracing some of their ideas. So thank you very much, Chief Ishi and the police department. And as we heard, I requested our city manager to have our police chief increase the patrols during this time. In order to be able to catch some of these offenders. And we're also getting a legal confidential from our city attorney, Mr. Russ Yarara. So thank you with regards to that. So one thing that I, as the mayor, have done, and actually since I've been elected official since two thousand nine. Is every day before the city council meetings, I have open office hours between like four and five o'clock. So these office hours are meant to have the residents come in person to be able to discuss things that they might be, that, that they're concerned about. That they've seen on the agenda and that we're be able to address at the city council meetings. So things that they want me to address, and so that's been a real big success. And in light of the situation right now with COVID nineteen, we haven't been, haven't been able to do that comfortably because city hall has been closed. So I've been taking telephone calls, emails and contacts through Facebook and all the social media. And I've been able to talk to people via Zoom, so I've had several of those conversations, office hours anytime, so it's not restricted to those days. So I wanna let you guys know that you can reach out to me, my office hours are extended twenty-four hours at this point. But since we can't have this, these meetings the day before, I'm going to be having a. Type of office hours, I'm going to invite the community, I have invited the community to come have coffee and danishes with me. Starting Monday the twenty-ninth, the Tuesday the thirtieth, on July first and July second, from eight to nine thirty in the morning. At the Memorial Center, we're gonna have coffee and danishes, an opportunity for you to be able to talk to me as my open office hours at that time. So we've been having a great response and I'm looking forward to meeting as many of you as possible. Since I can't have the in-person office hours that I, I usually tend to do. So we, you're required to wear your face masks and we will have physical distancing take place there, so as a precautionary measure. So I hope to see you at that time. So thank you everybody for participating, we're going to adjourn the meeting. I knew, I knew, you're muted.
I'm not muted.
So.
I just wanna say thank you to Arnie and also to Von Norris. To address all the mail, the emails that we receive about open reopen of the pool. So I know that it's gonna be opening July with some protocols and guidelines from the Health Department. So I wanna thank Arnie and Von to respond to those emails. I just want to acknowledge all those people that send us the emails that we on top of the situation, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for our city attorney, Mr. City Attorney, are you there?
Go ahead.
You're ready?
Yes.
What's the situation with the RFK being in a parking lot? I have, I receive weekly. I have, I receive weekly calls, what's going on? You said you were going to give us a legal confidential? Is it legal, or what? Or do we need to apply Councilmember Hidaro Watt's blight fee to this property owner? Or what? What, what, what can you tell us at this point?
Because. Let me, let me find out, I don't, I don't have it with me right now, the report from code enforcement. But I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, because if the blight fee that Councilmember Hidaro Watt came up with applies to this situation, I think it'd be wise to implement it here. We just only wanted to, we don't want this to be a nuisance for the community, that's all, that's ultimately it is.
Okay.
And if we can communicate to the gentleman, if he's not in compliance, that he needs to resolve something, he can resolve it and that's it. Please.
Okay.
Okay, when do you think you can be able to give us that information by?
I'll get it, give it to you tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yes.
That'd be much appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you so much, and everybody, thank you all for being here, have a nice day, and have a good night's sleep. Okay? This meeting is now adjourned.